...to remove a home with 2,537.3 square feet of floor area to construct a new 2,776.5 square foot home. The project includes removal of some sheds, construction of a 384 square foot garage, installation of new lawn area, permeable paper area, and a new septic system. The project is subject to site plan for new floor area and shoreline buffer. Relief requested for dimensional requirements of per section 179-3-040, dimensional requirements. The project has been revised, reducing some of the relief requested. The new home is to have a floor area of 2,776.5 square feet, 29.1 percent, where 2,098.8 square feet, 22 percent, is the maximum allowed. The north side setback is to be five feet, one inch, and the south side setback is to be eight feet, where 12 feet, where a 12-foot setback is required. Garage is to be six feet setback, where a 12-foot setback is required. Permeability is proposed to be 66.3 percent, where 75 percent is required. The criteria for considering an area variance according to chapter 267 of town law in making a determination, the board shall consider five criteria. One, whether undesirable change in the neighborhood, in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of this area variance. The project, according to staff, may be considered to have a minor impact on the neighborhood properties as the construction of the home is 10 percent greater than allowed on the site. Two, whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. The feasible alternatives may be possible to meet the requirements of the waterfront residential zone. Three, the requested area variance is substantial. The relief may be considered moderate relative to the code. North side relief is 6.9 feet, south side is four feet. The floor area is 7.1 percent in excess, and permeability is 8.7 less permeable for the site. Four, whether proposed variance will have adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district. The project as proposed may be considered to have a minimal to no impact on the environmental conditions of the area. The project includes a new septic system, and the drinking water that is drawn from the lake is to remain. Five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. The project as proposed may be considered self-created. Staff comments. The applicant proposes to construct a new home in the waterfront residential zone that includes site work, new septic system, and a new garage. The applicant has indicated the new home is at a similar location as the existing home. Plan shows the new home location, including elevation and floor plans. The board requested the applicant in the September meeting to provide up to the plans to minimize relief requested. The applicant has reduced the floor area by 3 percent, no longer needs a shoreline setback, and has increased the hard surfacing by .3 percent from the previous proposal.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, John Lapper.
So let me make my little speech, John. When you get, we're going to only have one here at a time. Would you, John, please wait down the podium and the microphone there?
Yes, sir. Laura's notes did a good job of summarizing where we are. When this was presented in September, the planning board had recommended approval, and you had sent the applicant back to make it a smaller request. It's not that this is a large house, it's just that it's a small lot, pre-existing lot, and it's got a pretty ratty camp on it. So they already sought approval and constructed the septic system, which is as far away as it can be on the lot. Since last time, as the notes indicated, the house is now 50 feet from the lake. The floor area was reduced by 3 percent from the last request. This is for their permanent home, a retirement home, so it needs to be a little bit bigger than what's there. But, you know, we think this is a very modest proposal. All the new construction is towards the road, the slightly larger garage, and the slightly larger house. But a bedroom was taken off upstairs from what was here last time. Substantial plantings were added along the lake. And the only reason that there's a minimal increase in the impermeability is because when Chazen reviewed it, you can't have porous pavers near the septic system for the driveway. You know, so that's just a minor technicality. But it's dramatically better than it was last time. The side setbacks are essentially the same as what's always been there. There have been no issues with the neighbors, no complaints. So, you know, it's a, it's a much better application than when it was presented last time. But it's really the minimum that they need to make this their permanent home and fit it on this lot. But with the stormwater management, that's included in the plan, plus the landscaping, it's a big improvement over what's there now.
So do we have any questions of the applicant? So, yeah, I, I'm really impressed with the changes that have been made, and, and really the, you know, the major problem is the permeability. But, you know, because of the size of the lot, the .21 acres, it makes meeting the permeability requirements really pretty difficult. And when you figure it's really just a little bit bigger than it was before, I think you guys have done a really good job. Any other questions?
The only problem I can see is the, you know, you're doing away with all your sheds, unfortunately. And a 16-by-24 garage is awful small to house everything. It's too bad you couldn't have incorporated that, especially you say they're getting older. It's too bad you couldn't have put the garage into the house to walk right into the house from the garage. You know, it's, you're talking about getting older. It's nice to be able, especially in the winter months, to walk out of there. But, you know, it's gonna be hard to have any equipment to, to maintain that property.
That means calling the lawn service to do it.
Yeah, but you don't want to do that. But, otherwise, yeah, it's a good project. Nice to know.
Other questions? So at this particular time, I'm going to, a public hearing has been advertised, and so I'm going to open the public hearing. I'm going to invite anybody on the outside who has comment on this to give us a call at 518-761-8225, and see if there's anybody in the audience who has comment on this project. Roy, do we have any written comment?
No.
Waterkeeper.
Oh, sorry. I couldn't see you back there. You're, you're blocked off. Would you come forward, please? Hold on a second, John.
John, you were interrupting.
Chris, could you just move up to the side to?
I just wanted to see him clean it off.
I'm getting good at this.
He, he actually, he did a much better job than Mr. O'Connor, Ron. So we...
Go to a lot of meetings.
I won't go near that. Same.
Thank you. Good evening, Chris Nowitzki, Lake George Waterkeeper. Appreciate your scrutiny of this application and requesting the revisions to it, and thank the applicant for that. I did have a question on the permeability, because in my view, the application didn't completely improve because the permeability actually decreased from the last application. There's more impervious. John provided a, a reason for that with the removal of the permeable pavement near the septic system. My only suggestion to that is, you know, there are such things as grass pavers that you can actually put down, where it's reinforced grass turf, probably might even be cheaper than, than asphalt, which could be an option. Another comment, which may be more towards the planning board, they referenced more planting shoreline buffer. But if you look at the landscape plan, the, which is not up here, the, the landscaping is more along the, the side property line and, and along the house, and it's not really along the shoreline. So, again, it's not compliant with the code, we feel, and, and gets away from the intent of a shoreline buffer. It, it shouldn't be a sideline buffer, it should be a shoreline buffer. So, but that may be more of a site plan issue. But those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So now John gets to watch you. John, do you care to comment?
I appreciate Chris saying positive things about the project. We're happy to talk to the planning board about both those things. I think that the answer is that the grass area would be the same in terms of something potentially coming off the car and into the septic. And it's probably better to have the impermeable, but that, because that was the Chazen comment. But we'll certainly talk to the planning board about that at site plan. And, you know, because it's a narrow lot, we really did add a lot of planting, you know, there's the boathouse, there wasn't a lot of room right there, but it's all along the lake. So, you know, we'll, we'll talk about that if the planning board wants that as a site plan issue, we can move things around.
So I think we've exceeded our two minutes. So at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to poll the board, and I'm going to start with John.
Yeah, I think they've done a nice job since the last time we've, we've met with them. And, you know, definitely a new septic system is going to be a good thing. They do have, you know, they are leaving the shoreline undisturbed there, so that's a good thing. They are asking for 677 feet above the allowable far variance, but, but I think they've done the best they can with a small lot, and I'd be on board with it.
Ron?
Yes, I, I agree with John. I have nothing to further to add. I'd be in favor of this project as presented.
Michelle?
I'm in agreement. Well, excuse me, I think it's a, a good project for the lake.
Brett?
I think it's well thought out. You know, a smaller request here, the new septic I see as a good variable, you know, to this project. I think they, I think the client, the applicant here has done the best they can with a relatively small lot, and accordingly, I'd be in favor of the project.
Jim?
I have no problems. To me, the modifications from the original are an improvement, so I'm all for it.
Roy?
I'm basically in agreement with everybody else, but I'm still not quite understanding how the permeability issue will be relieved by the planning board rather than us.
What Chris suggested is that the, the paved parking area could possibly be the grass where you put some pavers on it. I'm not sure if that's going to work right next to the septic system.
So basically, you don't have a solution to that?
No, I mean, it was only, it was .3 percent, so it was a really minor change, because we took some other stuff away, so made the patio smaller to accommodate it.
I'll go along with it.
And, yeah, I think what we, what we gained here, the new septic system, more than offsets what we give away, which is a, a small change in permeability. And so I'm in favor of the project. So at this particular time, I'm going to ask Ron to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to recommend that we approve area variance AV 30-2020, William and Kathleen, Bossy 53, Assembly Point Road. As per the document prepared by staff, we find that there is not an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood nor detriment to nearby properties as this, this proposed structure blends in with the existing homes. Feasible alternatives have been considered and are not reasonable, and we have included them to minimize the request. The requested area variance is really, not really substantial. As we're replacing an existing older dwelling, there is not an adverse impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood or district. Alleged difficulty could be, say, could be stated as self, as self-created, as there are, are some measurements that they're, some relief they're looking for. In addition, the board finds that the benefits to the applicant from granting the requested variance would outweigh the resulting detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. The board also finds that the variance request under consideration is a minimal as necessary. Therefore, I recommend we approve area variance AV 30-2020.
So I have a motion. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
John? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Yariko?
Yes.
Mr. McDavid?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. McCain?
Yes.
Thanks for working with us on this one. We really appreciate it.
John, do you want any, any of the? So our next application is AV 40-2020, Stewart Shops Corporation.
The applicant proposes a 280-square-foot generator shed to the rear of the property near the dumpster. The project includes relocation of a 100-square-foot shed to a parking space. No changes to the existing 4,929-square-foot Stewart Shop or the 2,560-square-foot fuel canopy. The proposed relief required is per section 179-3-040, dimensional requirements, 179-5-020, accessory structures. The generator shed is to be located 10 feet to the rear property line where a 25-foot setback is required. Minor to no impacts to the neighborhood may be anticipated. Feasible alternatives may be limited due to the existing buildings on the site and the parking arrangement. Relief may be considered moderate relevant to the code. Relief 15 feet is for rear, the rear setback. The project as proposed will have minimal impact on the neighborhood, and the difficulty may be considered self-created. The applicant, staff comments, the applicant proposes a 280-square-foot generator to be placed on Stewart Shops' property in the northeast corner. The generator shed is located in proximity to the dumpster area and an existing shed. The generator shed will be, will replace the existing shed, and the existing shed is relocated to the pavement area.
Good evening, Chris Potter from Stewart's.
Wait one second. Queen Mary Planning Board, based on its limited review, did not identify any significant adverse impacts. It cannot be mitigated with the current project proposal. Now it's adopted on November 17th by unanimous vote.
Where, where the location of the?
Just state your name again.
Oh, sorry. Chris Potter from Stewart's. The, the location of it is actually where an existing shed is now, so that'll be moved over to the other side of the dumpster. So it'll be the shed, the dumpster, and then the generator storage area. And it's, it's just for storage of generators that would be used during power outages for shops around the area. You know, they're not going to be running in, in that location, strictly for, for storage. And, you know, we looked at some other spots on the site, and we felt it'd be better in the back versus, you know, towards the front, and we have stormwater, you know, basin on the other side. So there's really, at this location, no other alternatives that would, that would really work. With the generator trailer and the van that would be pulling in there to back it in, it really needs to be in that spot to be able to maneuver it in there. That's really about it.
So the generators are mobile? They're, they're not fixed?
Correct. Yep.
So do we have any questions of the applicant? Go ahead, Ron.
Will this be left on the site all the time?
Yep, unless there's a power outage, you know, somewhere where they would need it, then they would, you know, they would get moved to that location for the time being, and then it would be brought back to this location.
Oh, you're, you're, you're stating that this is not going to be there for this shop all the time? It'll be moved to other shops?
Yes.
So we shouldn't see other shops coming looking for generator support? Like the one up on Route 9, further on up by the outlets?
Potentially, it could, it could be moved there during a power outage if they would need it, yes. But they, the generators that are here, they, if there's a power outage with the, with the shops that are neighboring it, you know, they, they would move it as needed from, from shop to shop, you know, to keep the, the coolers and the freezers back down to temperature, and then they would, they would rotate it to.
Is this a newer initiative by Stewart based on power failures, or the fact that they're just going to have them just in case?
Um, we have them at other locations just like this. It's, we used to, we used to house them all at our warehouse in, in Saratoga.
I see.
But response time, you know, for them to go there, pick them up, then drive them back to the stores, you know, we lose valuable time when they're down. So we've, we've been trying, we, we have districts that the shops are in, so we've been trying to incorporate these in separate districts, so each district has their own set of generators, so during power outages, they can, they can dispatch them as needed.
Okay. Makes sense. Other questions? So we do have a public hearing advertised this evening, so at this particular time, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to invite anybody on the outside who is interested in inputting on this project. Give us a call at 518-761-8225. And I'm going to ask that there's any written correspondence?
There is no written correspondence.
And I'm going to see if anybody in the audience has an interest in addressing us on this particular application. So we just got to wait for two minutes for people to come in from the outside, to call in from the outside. So what does this district comprise? Is Warrensburg part of this district, say?
Uh, I don't believe Warrensburg is, like, each district is usually like 10 to 12 stores.
Okay, so like 149 probably would be?
Yep. Yep. I think...
Bay Road?
Bay Road, the one, Aviation Road, exit 19, probably exit 18.
Ridge Road and Glens Falls, was that the new one you guys did by Sanford Ridge?
Yeah. Yep, probably. Yeah, just, just geographically, the shops, you know, that are close by.
Makes sense. Good to be proactive, you know?
Can I, can I go off the record here?
No. You're on the...
In the late eighties, when I worked in the phone company, we were upgrading the repair service bureaus in Syracuse. Syracuse had Syracuse Central and then 405 going up to Messina. And we had a, we had a centralized repair service bureau, so we're going to centralize it. And I said, behind the, behind the workstations, we're going to have electrical connections. And in the electrical connections, we're going to go out to a generator. As I presented it to the Syracuse people, the third-level fellow says to me, well, what are those outlets for? I said, well, we're going to have a generator. He said, well, how many power failures have we had? He said, my neighbor is the NIMO district guy.
That was, yeah, that was the...
And he said, I don't want that thing out there, because I'm going to have to routine it once a month, and it's going to take time and effort, because Syracuse didn't have a lot of failures. But anyway, that's in my other world. When the guy, he put me up, so I said, oh, and I thought I was doing a, a good thing, you know, putting in this generator.
You didn't know you were in the midst of NIMO territory.
I was just a, a, a New York City guy coming upstate, and he said, get out of here, kid. But anyway, I'm, I'm back on the record.
So it doesn't look like we've generated any interest from the outside. Do we, how many, how many viewers do we have? Oh, wow. So at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask Michelle to make a motion here.
My comments.
You want to look at the board?
Oh. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Sorry, we're, we're all positive.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry about that.
I just jumped right ahead, but...
So actually, so I'll, I'll start the, I'll start the comment from you, Michelle.
Oh, I'm in, in favor. I really don't think it's going to change the character of the neighborhood. You've considered several different scenarios, so I think this is the best option. So I'm in favor.
So Ron?
Yeah, I think the way they're putting it, you know, the property's out of the way, and there's a building there, they're going to move forward. I have no issue with this.
John?
Yeah, also, it makes sense. Certainly asking for a minimal, for a relief of 15 feet on that one side, it's not going to bother anybody, so it's a good, good project.
Roy?
Yeah, I agree. The relief is minimal, and it's, it sounds like it's a good point.
Jim?
Makes perfect sense.
Brett?
Lake Jim, makes perfect sense. I have no problem with it.
And I too see it as a, certainly a minor request, and so I'll approve it. So now I'll ask Michelle for a motion.
I knew that.
I lost my head, Michelle. I'm sorry. It'll never happen again.
That's okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve area variance 40-2020 for Stewart Shops Corporation, located at 1,002 State Route 9, tax map number 296, 13-1-65. Based upon tonight's discussion and review of the application materials, and on consideration of the criteria specified in section 179-14-020 of the Town Code and chapter 267 of New York State Town Law, for the draft provided by staff, there is not going to be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood nor detriment to nearby properties. As discussed, this project will seamlessly fit in with the character of the neighborhood. I don't think anyone will notice a change from the street. Feasible alternatives were discussed and have been considered by the board and are reasonable and have been included to minimize this request. The requested variance is not substantial. It's a shed to house generators in the back of the store. There will not be an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, and the alleged difficulty is self-created but doesn't have bearing on tonight's proceedings. In addition, the board finds that the benefits to the applicant from granting the requested variance would outweigh the resulting detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood and community. We also find that the variance request under consideration is the minimum necessary. Based on the above findings, I make the motion to approve area variance number 40-2020.
I'll have a motion. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it, Mr....
Ron? Ron? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Yariko?
Yes.
Mr. McDavid?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. McCain?
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you. So our next application is AV 41-2020, Thomas and Ann Ryan.
The applicant proposes to install a 435-square-foot in-ground pool with a surrounding patio. Project includes installation of a privacy fence. The site is an existing 2,412-square-foot home with no changes. Relief requested is for dimensional requirements, and that's per section 179-5-020, accessory structure pool. The applicant proposes a pool to be eight feet from the rear property line where a 20-foot setback is required.
So is that a, does that reflect the changes that were made?
Correct. So the correction is, I emailed the entire board a correction, so we should probably insert that information there. And that is, the survey shows a setback to the eight, to the property line of eight feet. The applicant has indicated that is to the fence. The, but the pool itself is 12 feet 6 inches to the property line, and myself and staff confirmed with the zoning administrator, the distance to an in-ground pool is from the water's edge to the property line, and so the setback is to be 12 feet 6 inches, and the relief is 7 feet 6 inches.
So the relief is 7, 6, 1?
Correct.
The relief, okay.
So you got that, Roy?
Yeah, what she said.
So only, you found one, one side, then?
Okay.
The proposed pool may be, I don't know, was it advertised that way, though? I, I know you got that.
So, so what happened, the way that it was advertised, was for dimensional requirement?
Okay.
So the, so that, in an acceptable way, so that when a crux like this shows up, it is, we can address it as, at the meeting.
Okay. So the proposed pool may be considered to have minimal to no impact on the character of the neighborhood. Feasible alternatives may be considered limited due to the existing home and septic location. So the relief requested may be considered to be a minimal, minimal relevant to the code. So the relief now is requested at what?
Seven feet 6 inches.
Seven feet 6 inches. The requested variance may have minimal to no adverse impact on the environmental conditions in the neighborhood, and the relief requested may be considered self-created. Staff comments, the applicant proposes to place an in-ground pool to the rear of the existing home, and the plans show the location of the septic fields and a proposed pool.
So... So, is Thomas and Anne Ryan here?
Do you want to let them hear them?
Are they there?
No. I will email them and apologize. I apologize, I didn't, I was thinking, I apologize, I didn't authorize them.
So we'll just hold on to this, move on to the next one, and...
Or we can proceed.
Yeah, if we don't think it's...
We can make a motion to proceed if we...
Can we do that without them here?
We can open the public hearing anyways.
Yeah, well, we have to open the public hearing. So, yeah, I suppose, does anybody have any questions? Seems pretty straight.
Yeah, why aren't they here?
Yeah, right, why aren't they here? Well, we'll just, we'll see if we have any questions, and we'll just, so with no questions, and I think at this particular time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Invite anybody on the outside who's watching, give us a call at (518) 761-8225. Whoa, there we go.
There they are.
Oh, so that's now. Hello, this is Queensbury Zoning Board of Appeals? Yes. This is Queensbury Zoning Board of Appeals, yes. Can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me? Laura, you want to?
Yep.
Yes, I can hear you. Okay, let me sit, oh, that was, all right. All right, so you're Mrs. Ryan?
I am.
Okay, so were you watching? Did you hear the presentation?
Yes, we did. Hold on just a second.
Yes.
Hi, this is Tom Ryan.
Yes. So did you see the presentation?
Yes, we did. We paused, we paused, yes, we did.
Okay, so at this particular time, I've opened the public hearing. The only problem is, you're on the line where if anybody wants to call in, you know, this is the line that they've used. So we don't have any questions at this particular time. So if you will wait until I announce that the public hearing is closed and you call back in, then, you know, you can address any problems that arise. Is that okay?
Okay, okay, so we'll hang up at this point.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's a first. That's a first.
Yeah, it is. So at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And for the Ryans, I'm going to poll the board. Actually, we don't really need any more input from them, do we, unless some questions arise during the polling of the board?
Correct.
Okay, so for the Ryans, you will not have to call in unless we request it. So I'm going to start the inquiry with Brett.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
So are you in favor or just in favor of the project?
I am a little bit concerned, to be honest with you.
Okay.
And I think I need to, I guess what I would say is, I want to kind of table my answer to that and hear what my fellow board members have to say. I just, my concern is that this thing may be a little bit overbuilt, okay? And so that would be my answer at this point.
Okay, Jim?
I think, you know, we've dealt with pools on numerous occasions previously, and I don't see that this is any different. I mean, I think we've had these ones that are shoehorned into these smaller properties, but I don't see that there's any public commentary negatively against this, so I would be in favor of it.
Okay, Roy?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Jim, especially since it's been reduced since the earlier application came in, so I'd be in favor of it.
John?
Yeah, it is a problem because it is a small lot, and the house sets back fifty feet from the road, so it doesn't leave much room for, with the septic system, leach field there and everything. It's really tight, and since there's no neighbors, and against the project, and there's going to be some special screening as far as the type of fencing and that, I don't see any problem with it as is, so I'd be on board.
Ron?
Yeah, the only question I have is, what's the privacy fence? How high?
Standard, standard six.
Is that four foot?
No, six.
No, six foot is over the standard.
No, six foot in the back, it's in the back, in the backyard.
Right, yeah, but that would be the back of the property. We're talking about a privacy fence around the pool. I don't think six foot works.
Laura?
I'm not certain what the, I can take another look, but...
I guess it's a question you have to ask the people, because they're showing us here, that's in the back.
The fence we're referencing is in the back, correct?
It's already there.
Right. It's a, okay.
I have no problem with the pool going where there it is. My question is, what's the height of the privacy fence? That's all.
So that's not part of what we're approving or disapproving?
We're approving the pool.
We're just approving the location of the pool, the set from the property line?
The project includes a privacy fence.
Which is not there, the fence is not there yet. It's going to be...
Okay.
Privacy fence is on the property line, it's not, it's not an issue around the pool.
It's not going around the pool?
No.
Okay, well, then again, what's the privacy fence going to be?
Well, it says a black aluminum fencing around the perimeter of the pool.
Right.
Which has to be, has to be a certain height, a legal height, anyways.
But the question is, what is that legal height? I...
That's right. I believe it's four foot.
Four, it's exactly right.
I'm just asking what it is, and the Ryans can answer that.
I guess I don't understand, if it's code compliant with building and codes, I...
Yeah, what's the code for a fence around the pool?
I don't know.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. That doesn't work.
So you're not in favor of it?
No, no, my question is, I won't approve it until I find out what the privacy, the height of the privacy fence is.
Wants to know the height of the fence. I think it's a...
So are you asking for the height of the fence around the pool or the privacy fence that's...
No, the height of the fence around the pool.
Okay.
Well, the legal height is four feet for a pool, right?
It has to be, it has to be...
So it has to be a legal height, it could be higher, but...
If it was higher, then we'd be asked for a variance, and we aren't being asked for a variance here, right?
No, this is, we're talking about a vinyl fence here.
It says black aluminum, black aluminum.
It shows it on the plot. It shows it on the...
Black aluminum fencing around the pool perimeter. It's internal.
You just have to pull back in and...
You can pass on me, Mr. Chairman, and go to somebody else.
Michelle?
I'm in favor as proposed. The, I think it's a minimal request, fits in with the character of the neighborhood.
So Brett, back to you.
I would also just, while I do believe it's a little bit outside the scope, I would also like to just know the answer to that. I am in favor of the project the more I look at it. I don't see opposition from the rear neighbor, Aggleston, or the Hunts. And looking at it, I do believe that it's a relatively small lot in that what we're looking for here is actually not that major. So I would be in favor, Mr. Chairman, of the project.
So at this particular time, I'm going to ask Jim to make a motion here?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve Area Variance forty-one dash two twenty twenty at Ten Pleasant Lane, Thomas and Anne Ryan. The applicant is requesting relief for dimensional requirements in a moderate-density residential zone. Specifically, they're asking for relief from the rear property line setback, and that relief as modified by staff is seven feet, six inches. Is that correct?
So the setback is twelve feet, six...
Oh, setback is twelve feet.
setback is twelve feet, six inches.
And the relief is seven feet, six.
The relief is seven feet, six inches. As far as undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, there's no impact on the character of the neighborhood area. It's a small lot, it is a little bit shoehorned in, but it does fit. As far as whether the benefits to the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, feasible alternatives may be considered limited due to where the septic system in the existing home are. The existing home is fifty feet back from the road. As far as whether the requested area variance is substantial, it's considered to be minimal, and that relief, again, is, is it seven feet, six inches?
Yes.
Is the relief that you're requesting. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse or negative impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, will have minimal to no impacts on the environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it is self-created by the fact that they want to put a pool in there themselves. I would move for its approval.
Just got to say it's the...
Minimum, and it's the minimum necessary.
So have I a motion here? Can I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Brett, call the vote, please.
This is Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Henkel?
Yes.
No.
Mr. McDavid?
Yes.
Mr. Yariko?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
So to the Thomases, you have an approved project. There was a question on the height of the fence around the pool, but we believe that it will be within spec.
Or code.
So next project is Area Variance forty-two dash twenty twenty. Peter Sheehan, Hutchins Engineering.
The applicant proposes a two hundred and twenty-four square foot sunroom addition. The project is to include a deck above of two hundred and twenty-four square feet. The existing home is a floor area of four thousand two hundred and seventy-nine square feet with a two thousand five hundred and twenty-eight square foot footprint. The new floor area of four thousand five hundred and three square feet with a new footprint of two thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. Requested relief is residential requirements and expansion of a non-conforming structure, and that's per section one seventy-nine dash three dash zero four zero and one seventy-nine dash four dash zero eight zero and section one seventy-nine dash thirteen dash zero one zero. The two hundred and twenty-four square foot sunroom is to be located forty-six point nine feet from the shoreline where a fifty-foot ship setback is required. Minor to no impact to the neighborhood may be anticipated. Feasible alternative may be considered, being considered may be limited due to the location of the existing home. Relief may be considered minor where three point one foot of relief is being requested. The project as proposed may be considered to have minimal to no impact on the environmental conditions of the site or area, and the difficulty may be considered self-created. Staff comments, the applicant proposes construction of a two hundred and twenty-four square foot sunroom addition with an open deck above. The project includes removal of the existing foot area for the construction of the sunroom. The project will include stormwater management with an eve trench to the front of the structure. The plans show the location of the sunroom addition. And then the Queensbury thing, board, based on its limited review, did not identify any significant impacts that cannot be mitigated with the current project proposal, and that was adopted under I-17 two thousand and twenty by unanimous vote.
Good evening, board. My name's Tom Hutchins, Hutchins Engineering, here on behalf of Peter Sheehan, trustee of the Paul and Margaret Sheehan Trust. And Peter is with us. I would question one of the items mentioned in the description, and that has to do with expansion of a non-conforming structure. This, I believe, is a conforming structure. The house was constructed in two thousand and fourteen, and it's, I believe that's tight, so I believe that that may be an error. What the Sheehans propose is, is to add a fourteen-by-sixteen sunroom on the shoreline side of the lake, a single-story, would have a rubber roof and a deck above it that can be accessed from above. There presently is a much smaller deck in this precise location. It's about six feet wide, and they want to take that out to sixteen feet with a room beneath it. What we're asking for, what happens with this layout, is right here, that little triangle is in excess of the fifty-foot shoreline setback, so we're asking for relief of four point four feet from the shoreline setback to that corner of the structure, and it's kind of because the house isn't, isn't, the shoreline makes a dip there, obviously, you can see it, and it, the setback is not parallel with the rear of the house, per se. Property's been in the family for some sixty years. They, Paul and Margaret Sheehan rebuilt this residence in two thousand and fourteen. It's very well-kept, shoreline is very well-buffered, there's a, well, it's not a new septic system now, but it was new in two thousand and fourteen, and there's, there's well-functioning stormwater controls. And we seek your support for this variance. We've looked at some options, and for one reason or another, this is, this is what fits their needs and meets their goals and works with the confines of the geometry of the house. So with that, I turn it over to the board for questions.
So do we have questions of the applicant?
I have a question. I know it's a minor request, but is there a consideration to build it within the confines of the setback? Shave off a couple feet, make it a little smaller?
Well, we've tried to, we've tried to make, we looked at some options of geometry, and there is a, there's a, there's two valleys on this roof, and this is the same width as the existing deck, and they know from experience that those valleys, we can't go any wider because the valleys will drain onto this deck. So the thought of making it a little wider and less deep, it doesn't work, it doesn't work for their needs because of that reason, I don't know.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, a public hearing has been advertised for this evening, and so at this particular time, I'm going to open the public hearing and invite anybody who's watching from the outside to give us a call at (518) 761-8225. Roy, is there anything written?
There's no written, no.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this particular project? So I'm not going to blab this time because I forgot what I was doing the last time, so we're just going to sit in silence for two minutes.
Silence is cool.
I will say that that's the first time we've had the applicant as a call-in, I think, right?
No, we've had one other, it was fine.
We had one in the parking lot. Somebody called from the parking lot, didn't they?
No.
No?
It was assigned very...
Oh, we had one in the parking lot.
A while ago. The other one, that, I think there was a public comment.
Okay, that was a public comment, okay.
Yeah, so I'm not aware of why they weren't present.
They started to apologize, and then we cut them off.
Yeah.
Okay.
At least they were on the phone.
So at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to poll the board, and I'm going to start with Jim.
Yeah, I think this is a very minimal request. It's going to allow these people to enjoy their home. It's a well-crafted site. There's no issues that I foresee.
Brett?
I agree. Very minimal request, and I would be in favor of the project.
Michelle?
I agree, it's a minimal request, and they've considered other options that weren't viable. So I'm in favor.
Ron?
Did you say John or Ron?
Ron.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman. I have no issue with this.
John?
Yeah, it's one of the larger properties on the lake, and it's a very minimal request of four-point-four feet relief, so yes, I'd be on board with it.
Did you say one of the larger properties?
One of the larger properties on the lake.
Oh.
Am I wrong or right?
Wrong.
Oh, okay. Well, one of.
Is it, is it directly across from you, Jim?
It's kind of off to the right, looking up from my house.
Roy?
Yeah, I'm okay with the project. I'm in agreement with everybody else.
Yeah, it's a, it's a beautiful property, and I think what's being requested here is minimal, so I too support the project. So, at this particular time, I'm going to ask Ron if he'd make a motion. Ron, not John.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really appreciate that. I want to recommend that we approve area variance AV forty-two dash twenty-twenty, thirty-one Bertroux. Peter Sheehan, CO, what is that, CO? CO trustee, okay. As per the document prepared by staff, we find that there is not an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood nor a detriment to nearby properties, and this request blends right in. Feasible alternatives have been considered by the board and are reasonable and have been included to minimize the request. The requested variance is really not substantial, as it blends in well with the, with the whole lake property line. There is not an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The alleged difficulty we could suggest is self-created. However, the addition, in addition, the board finds that the benefit to the applicant from granting the requested variance would outweigh the resulting detriment to health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood. The board also finds that this variance request, under consideration, is minimal as necessary. Therefore, I recommend we approve area variance AV forty-two dash twenty-twenty.
So I have a motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Jim? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Yuriko?
Yes.
Mr. Hankel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. McDavid?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you don't have to wipe it down, because you're still up, right?
I'm coming back.
Want some of your sets of plans?
You want some papers here?
I, I don't need them. I've got to put resolutions on them.
You're going to, I think you're going to need them. Okay, great. Thank you both. Here, you got one more.
Take a couple more.
Walk around the whole table.
Walk around the whole.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You guys have a great evening.
You also, man.
Thank you.
Can you get it? Okay. Smiling under my mask.
Oh, good.
Okay, so our next application is AV forty-three twenty-twenty. Keith and Sarah Barton.
The applicant proposes to demo an existing home and construct.
Maybe, maybe, maybe a quarter.
And construct a nine-hundred-square-foot home with a floor area of one-thousand-eight-hundred square, square feet. The site work includes grading, erosion control, stormwater management, and a new septic. The new home is to be located in a similar location as the previous home that has been removed. The applicant requests a relief for dimensional requirements to the waterfront residential zone. The, that's per section one-seventy-nine dash three dash zero four zero dimensional requirements. The new home is to be located five-point-five feet from the north property line where a twelve-foot setback is required. The front setback is to be, is proposed to be seventeen point fifty, where a thirty-foot setback is required. The height proposed is thirty-one feet, where the maximum allowed is twenty-eight feet. Floor area is to be eighteen hundred square feet, where the maximum allowed is seventeen forty-two square feet. Minor to no impact to the neighborhood may be anticipated. The new home is in a similar location as the previous home, but further from the road. Feasible alternatives may be considered to locate the building on, in the setbacks, although this would require additional disturbance and be closer to the lake. The relief requested may be considered moderate, relevant to the code. The relief to the north is six-point-five feet. The front setback is twelve-point-seven feet. The height is three feet, and the floor area is fifty-eight square feet. Minor to no impact to the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood may be anticipated. The applicant proposes stormwater management for the new home and a new septic system to be installed. The septic system received a local water health area's approval, and the difficulty may be considered self-created. Staff comments? The applicant proposes to remove an existing home to construct a new home with a garage on the floor, the first floor, and a two-bedroom home on the second. The plans show the location of the existing and new home. The elevations are including, included showing the views of the new home.
Good evening, Board. Tom Hutchins with owner, applicant Keith Barton, and this, this property is at one-twenty Sunnyside North. It's been in, it's been in Keith's family for more than forty years, and he also, he also owns and lives in the adjoining residence to the, to the north. This had a, this had a mobile home on it for some, since before they owned it, so more than forty years, and the mobile home was, was used and renovated at least once, and, and has fallen into disrepair, and it has actually recently been removed because it's so far in disrepair that it had to be removed, just because they couldn't keep it. What they proposed to do on this property is to construct a thirty-by-thirty residence, second-floor residence with a garage below, and again, this parcel is, is like a lot of parcels on, on some of the small lakes, is, is a very small parcel, it's seventy-nine-hundred square feet. So to, to construct anything in full compliance on a parcel of this size is, is challenging at, at the least. This would suit their needs, and we have been to town board, who has approved a variance for a compliant septic system to serve the residents. Just a little note on, on the variances, we're asking for, we're asking for a front setback. We've actually moved the, the proposed residence seventeen feet further from the road than the prior mobile home. The prior mobile home was basically on the, the one corner of it touched the limit of the road, or the right-of-way, not the road itself, but, and there's a fairly wide right-of-way here in, in the field, so you're not actually on the road, but we're asking for seventeen feet. The reason we don't move it further back is, is that the slope really takes off toward the lake, and the further back we go, again, we're, we're trying to have a drive-in garage with this residence as well, so, so it would, it would exacerbate the height issue, it would exacerbate disturbance, and we're trying to find a happy medium with that location, and it's, if you got to look at it, it's roughly staked out in the field where the, where the corners were proposing. The side setback we're asking for is the north side, which is a side toward Keith's house, and, and we're proposing five-and-a-half feet. What that allows us to do is maintain the twelve-foot side setback on the other side, and it's also in excess, the, the prior home was, was three-point-seven feet from that, from that north side setback, so we've, we've increased that, and we're able to maintain the twelve feet on the other side. As far as height, the, the proposed structure from floor to ridge is twenty-six feet. The reason we run into a height variance is, again, the slope on the rear of the structure drops off, and we, as you know, we have to measure height from existing grade, so that's the reason for that. There's a point on the plan that says, point where height's measured, which is right there, and because the grade drops off, so the height is, is thirty, thirty-three feet? Thirty-one feet that we're asking for, but from the roadside view, it's, it's twenty-six feet high, which is, which would be compliant. And floor area ratio, we're asking for a very slim floor area ratio. Again, the very, very small lot, we've, they'd like to work with a thirty-by-thirty structure, which suits their needs, and is kind of a standard size in terms of materials and such. We're only fifty-six square feet over allowable floor area ratio, so that's, in essence, that's in essence that one. We have been there with, with, I said the town board has seen it, and we've met and reviewed with the building and coach director what we proposed to do, and, and he's given us input. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board for questions.
Do we have questions of the applicant?
So you're saying if you bring it closer to the lake, you're not going to, not going to take care of that height?
No, it's going to make it worse.
Make it worse.
Yeah, because of the height, okay, because the echo's down, okay.
Other questions?
No.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's really kind of tough, but it's not really much different than a number of the other properties that are very close to it. So, a public hearing has been advertised, so at this particular time, I'm going to open the public hearing, and if anybody watching from the outside wants to comment on this particular application, give us a call at five-one-eight-seven-six-one-eight-two-two-five. And Roy, do we have any written?
There's no written comment.
So, at this time, is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this particular project? So, we got to wait out for two minutes here?
You probably don't have any idea how many homes around that lake, that are on the lakeside that are of that height, do you? Is there?
They're of that height?
You can't say that because of the slope of the property.
Yeah.
You know, you're looking at the road, it's only twenty-six. I mean, that's just, that's just the terrain of that property.
So the top of that property versus, what is it, one-twenty-two, the, the next-door house? Where is that?
Oh, gosh, I don't know. Keith, you want to take a shot at that?
That's Sue Luer's property, that's about the same height. That's, actually, I think hers is twenty-seven feet.
But I mean, you know, not official measurement, but if you were looking, which property would be taller?
Um, there's just.
So I, I guess the official here, you should step down, wipe it down, and, and Mr. Barton can come up and.
Uh-oh, you're making them work, huh?
I, he's, you know, he got, he skinned out because he didn't have somebody in front of us on the, on the first one, so he's got to pay the price here. All right, so, so what you need to do is to state your name.
My name is Keith Barton, one-eighteen Sunnyside North.
Okay.
Been a resident of Sunnyside for about forty years.
So the question we proposed is, how does the top of this new property compare to the height of the property directly to your east?
About the same.
Okay.
How many, how many properties are on that lake, Joe?
Um, I believe there's about eighty.
Is it?
Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah, I think forty, forty of them have been before us.
You've done a lot.
Okay, thank you. So now, you, wait a minute. Wipe it down.
You're tough. You are tough.
Well, you caught me that one time.
I see, all right.
So how we doing with our two minutes?
We're good.
Okay, so at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to poll the board, and I'm going to start with John.
Generally, we don't give height that high when you're, we're granting three feet there, or actually, yeah, three feet, but in this case, it's, there's not much you can do, I guess, with the, to give it a second story, otherwise you'd have to have a ranch there to get what you want. You, you have to ask for that thirty-one feet, so I, I guess I'd, I don't really want to, but I guess I'd be on board with the granting of that, and also the granting of the fifty-eight feet above the allowable floor space, so, yeah, I'd be on board with the project.
Ron, how do you feel?
Yeah, I think it's an improvement to what was there, and the fact that they're, they're building a, a solid structure with a septic, I'd be in favor of the way it's presented.
Michelle?
Although it seems substantial because of the number of variances you're requesting, I think it's a terrific improvement in the neighborhood. I couldn't miss that old trailer. But seriously, it, it's a nice project, so I'm in favor.
So Brett?
I agree with Michelle. I think it's a good project. It's an improvement. It's a compliant septic system, all of the above. As Michelle indicates, when you kind of read this thing, it's like, holy moly, there's a lot of, you know, variances being requested, but in their entirety, I think it's a good project, and, you know, noting the way that, that slope, you know, really takes off towards the lake, it's, you've got to contend with that. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm in favor of the project.
Jim?
Yeah, it's an improvement with a setback off of Sunnyside North Road, which is one of the requests, too, and no one's, no, no one mentioned that one, but I think, you know, the house is going to be constructed as far back from the lake as is possible. If you put it closer to the lake, it would even more require relief on it, so I'm all in favor of it.
Roy?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with everybody else. I think they've done the best they can to mitigate some of the problems here, and overall, I think they've done a good job with it, so I'm in favor of the project.
And so I too support the project. We get an improvement to the environment with a new septic system. We get an improvement to the neighborhood with a much more attractive structure, so I think overall it's a winner. So at this particular time, I'm going to ask Michelle for a motion here.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve area variance forty-three dash twenty-twenty for Keith and Sarah Barton at one-twenty Sunnyside North. Tax MAC number two-seventy-nine point one-seven dash two dash eleven. Based on tonight's discussion and review of the application materials, and let's see, new criteria specified in section one-seventy-nine dash one-four dash zero eight zero A, the Queensberry Act Code, and chapter two-sixty-seven of New York State law, and based on our discussion, there is not going to be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood nor detriment to nearby property. Based on the information provided, there's really an improvement in some of these setbacks, even though the building is a little bit taller, it, on paper, but in appearance, I think it's going to really fit in with the character of the neighborhood. As discussed, feasible alternatives were considered, and are reasonable and have been included to minimize the request. The requested variance is not substantial, just even though there are several variances requested, each one is minimal, and there will not be an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. The alleged difficulty is self-created, but that doesn't have bearing on tonight's proceedings. In addition, the board finds that the benefit of the applicant, to the applicant, from the granting of the, of this requested variance would outweigh the resulting detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. Also, the board finds that the variance request, under consideration, is the minimum necessary. Based on the above findings, I make a motion to approve area variance forty-three dash twenty-twenty.
So we have a motion. Can I have a second, please? Second up. Brett? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Kewell?
Yes.
Mr. Hankel?
Yes.
Mr. Yuriko?
Yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. McDavid?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You want some plans? I don't need any more plans. Don't build from them.
Thank you. Good luck. Yep. Thank you, Board. So our next application is area variance forty-four twenty-twenty, MH Imperial Homes.
The applicant proposes to install a one-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-five-square-foot home with associated torches. The project work includes installation of a driveway area, a new septic system, and a well. The project site has an existing garage to remain about one-thousand-fifty-six square feet, and the relief requested is for dimensional requirements per section one-seventy-nine dash three dash zero four zero. The relief requested is for dimensional requirements per section one seventy-nine dash three dash zero four zero. And the new home is to be located eighty-one feet from the front property line and seventy-six feet from the rear property line, where a one hundred foot, uh, foot, where a one hundred foot setback is required. Then the home is to be located twenty feet from the east side property line with seventy-five feet required. The project may be considered to have little to no impact on the neighboring properties. The feasible alternatives may be limited due to the size of the parcel, point four six acres, within the three acre zoning district. Relief may be considered moderate relative to the code. The front relief is nineteen feet, the rear is twenty-four feet, and the sides are fifty-five feet. The project is, as proposed, may be considered to have minimal to no impact on the environmental conditions of the site or area. The project as proposed may be considered not self-created as the lot is pre-existing at less than three acres. Staff comments, the applicant proposes to place a new, new home on the existing vacant parcel. The parcel is to maintain the existing garage, the rear of the property with no changes. The site will have a new septic system and a new well. The plans show the location of the house, the house site and the existing garage. That's it.
So Greg, book one more visit and you get a discount.
Is this like deja vu?
So you gotta tell us your name first.
Greg Hewitt, MH Imperial Homes, and, uh, yes, I was here two months ago to have the same discussion about lot one seventy-three, which is next door. This is similar, um, and yet a little bit different. Again, we're under contract to purchase this contingent upon being able to receive a variance to actually build on it. With the sideline setbacks the way they are on the lot, in lot size, it's, it has a negative building lot, or, or envelope right now. So, you know, variance would be necessary to be able to utilize the land for any construction whatsoever. The, the two primary differences with this one versus the last one is this one has an existing structure on it, which is the garage. It's a three-car garage in the back of the parcel, which we would like to keep because it's, it's structurally sound, we'll clean it up a little bit. It, it needs a paint job and it needs to be cleaned up a little bit, but other than that, it's, it's actually a really solid structure. And I didn't specify a particular house on this because I don't actually have a particular house that I'm intending to build on that, so much as my, my goal would be to put it in kind of an inventory to make available to customers of mine that are looking to build in Queensberry. And so what we did is we created a footprint that we would be in not to exceed footprint. The way it's drawn on the map, that's, that's the outside footprint, including the building and any accessory structures, so decks and stairs which would be required. None of the, the decks or stairs would exceed that building envelope, and the actual house structure would be a little bit probably smaller than that because obviously you need three feet in the front and back for, for decks and stairs for your dress.
So, pretty straightforward, do we have any questions of the applicant?
Nope.
So, a public hearing has been advertised, so at this particular time, I'm going to open the, uh, public, uh, hearing. And anybody, uh, watching from the outside who wants to call in with reference to this, uh, project, give us a call at five one eight, uh, seven six one eight two two five. And Roy, do we have any written comment?
There is no written comment.
So, we do have somebody who wants to comment on this? So if you would, uh, wipe down the podium? And a microphone? Okay.
You're tough, you're tough.
So state your name for the record, please.
My name is Dave Novak, I live next door, I bought the house. My lawyer's called to put a halt on this for at least thirty days or longer because there's a deed screw-up on it. My name is on the property that this gentleman is trying to purchase, not my house. The lady that owns it and the lawyers are trying to work that out. Secondly, I'm not in favor of the project being built because I've talked to the town people here, not you folks, but the zoning person there, I, I don't remember his name offhand, and advised me it needs seventy-five feet between my property and this existing property. There is no seventy-five feet, it's only twenty feet measured off my house to the town, to the, uh, the line there. There is no seventy-five feet in the back because that's owned by another person. They bought the lot next door, I was told you can't buy two lots and build on, on them, they have to be individual. My well is in the back, my main concern is the well being polluted from this project. Like I say, it's not a feasible idea to put a house on there, there's not enough room. And right now, I'm letting you know that it's being tied up right now because of the, the wrong thing, so I don't know how this can go forth, being approved tonight or giving the, the approval for it when it's not correct at this time. We have been working on it, we're trying to get it corrected, but at the same time, I want my, knowing, my feelings known that I'm against this project because there's not enough room to be built on it. It was sold in three different lots, I bought the house. The other house that has, or the, the lot next to me that has the garage is very small, it's only sixty-three feet wide by two hundred feet. I was told you have to come back one hundred feet from the roadway to build, so that only leaves you a hundred feet by sixty-three, so-
So that's what he's asking for, our relief on these particular, uh, dimensions?
No, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, thank you.
No, that, that question is that-
So, just, uh, so for staff,
so with-
Can you give us some guidance here?
So with the deed issue and that, um, the applicant has submitted information about, um, the contract that's under sale, the issue between the two property owners, that is a civil matter. I have information in our file from the, the client that says that they're, they're under contract to purchase this property.
Well, there's, yeah, and there's a copy of the purchase contract with the contingency as the applicant indicates here to, to close. I, I, I believe there's two issues going on here, first and foremost is the reason, um, Mr. Hewitt's here this evening is, is the relief being sought. My question to staff though, and I think I understand this, but just to be clear, is that the title or the deed issue that's potentially being contended here is not really in our purview, is that, is that correct?
No, it's not part of what, so, yeah, I mean, the dimensions that, uh, the last gentleman, uh, mentioned are basically applicable to a RR three A property. What we have here is a building lot that existed before that zoning, and so it's too small, but it's a legal building lot, as I understand it. And this is the same situation that we faced with the other two applications from, uh, Mr. Hewitt, is that?
Just one other application.
Well, he, he had one about-
Correct.
A couple of years ago, right?
A year ago, correct.
And that was the same, basically the same thing.
But that was one lot divided into two, right? At one time, that was one lot, right?
Well, it was a undersized-
Right.
Lot for that, but it, you know, uh, wasn't really much different than any of the-
Right, existing.
Other properties, you know, pretty closely. Oh, excuse me, I got another, oh, okay.
I was just waiting for you guys to answer. How's it going? My name's Kyle, I live at one eighty Sunnyside.
So you gotta find your whole name.
So Kyle Ogden, I live at one eighty Sunnyside, so I'm across the road.
Yeah.
I agree with Dave, I'm not for it. It's not that I wouldn't want, you know, a nice new building put up on our road, uh, but I agree, I think the lot is just too small. When you look at it, the property lines are the, exactly the width of the, um, that three-bay garage. And even in my opinion, that three-bay garage is not that big. I only have a two-bay garage on my property and it looks to be almost the same size. Like I said, I, I think it'd be a little too close to Dave's house, um, and it'd kinda give me that trailer park vibe in a way, which I feel would decrease the face value of my house already. So, again, I'm not really for it, and again, it's not anything against, you know, his company. You know, I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Okay.
So.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
So Mr. Hewitt, do you have any comment?
Yeah, I don't know if there's some confusion, he said, he said the lot width was the same as the width of the garage, and then the other gentleman said something about it being sixty-three feet wide. This lot's a hundred feet wide, the lot one seventy-three was a hundred feet wide, and actually the lot that has an existing structure on it that's on there is lot two is only ninety-some odd feet wide. So I think the lot is consistent with the sizing of all the other lots in that neighborhood, so I'm not really sure what the perception is there, if there's a misperception as to what the width of the lot is. It's the same as, as all the other lots in the, in the area. And as for the, the title issue, um, yes, he's correct, there is, there is some confusion. This is an estate, or purchased through an estate that was transferred, and apparently there was some legal work that wasn't done properly, and, and they are working on resolving that. Obviously, we're not gonna proceed with the purchase unless we can get clear title and, and all that documentation is correct. So, I, I mean, essentially, the, the purchase is contingent on both things being cleaned up, one, the variance, and, and two, getting the title work proper.
Okay, so is there a chance that the dimensions will change?
Nope.
The width will change?
Dimensions of what?
The lot.
Of the lot?
No. No, the lot's the lot, and it's on the tax map, it's really, uh, it's a, as I understand it, at the time that the deed paperwork was filed with the transfer from the estate, there was, the county recorded it incorrectly on the wrong lot. So it's actually showing, I think his lot is showing that it's the one that, that's in question here, lot one seventy-five, and it's saying that, uh, he doesn't own the lot that he actually lives in. So, it, it was really just a, it was a, a function of, of a misrecording from what I understand.
Can you tell me what, the, in the back, there's, there's some fading, but it says lot five, lot four, lot three, lot two, lot one. The, 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 the boundaries of lot four appear to be wider than what you have indicated here. Is that a-
The boundaries-
Or is that something else?
The boundaries of lot four-
Sort of like, yeah.
Nope, that, that lot's exactly the same dimensions as the lot three.
All the same centers.
They're same size.
So what's lot five?
Lot five, it's, they're not actually lots that way, they, they only put it on the mapping that way for, for reference for having a discussion like this. They're not defined as lot one, two, three, and four, and five. Lot five is the, is the lot that this gentleman's house is on.
So, hundred by two hundred was the old standard lot size?
Hundred by two hundred, I think every, most of the lots over there on Sunnyside, in that area of Sunnyside are all hundred by two hundred.
Not only Sunnyside, but just about all of Queensberry.
That's kinda weird that they kept the RR three acre there, that's kinda weird.
And they only changed, as I understand it, they only changed the north side of Sunnyside, and the south side of Sunnyside is, is the other zoning district.
It doesn't make sense because none of those houses are three acre, none of those lots are three acres.
So we all set here? So, uh, at this particular time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm gonna poll the, uh, board, and, uh, I'll start with Brett.
Recognizing the neighbors here and fully appreciating and understanding, uh, their thoughts on things, I have to come back to, uh, so many of these lots, uh, from many, many years back, being the size that they are, et cetera. I am in favor of the project as it's proposed.
Jim?
Yeah, this is not a self-created problem, it was created when they created these lots, whenever that was, you know, in the year one. And I think that in this instance here, what's being requested, you know, is, I think, I think the issue with the neighbors is gonna have to be worked out. When, when you, they're still gonna do, they're still gonna have to go through site plan review for the project, you know, not, not at all?
No.
Okay. Well, I guess I would reluctantly be in favor of the project, even though it's on such a small lot.
So Roy?
Yeah, I'm gonna come down on the negative side of this, I just still think there's some questions remaining to me, for me as far as size, and, and, uh, so I'm gonna say no.
John?
Yeah, this is tough, I don't like approving a project that they're saying, they don't know what the building's gonna be on there. I, I, we feel better about approving of, you know, whatever the size of the building's gonna be. I know it doesn't, it says not to exceed, but I still think we should have an idea of what the building's gonna look like and where it's gonna be exactly. So, until they show us exactly where it's gonna be and the size of it, I, I don't think I can really say, um, I approve it.
Ron?
Yeah, he's looking, you're looking for a blank check, and I don't sign blank checks, so I would not be in favor of it.
Michelle?
Well, I, I also had a question about the site plan review, which you answered Laura, but I, you know, Mr. Novak, you know, brought up a concern about his well, I think it's a valid concern, and, um, I, I also-
Well, that, that, the well would be under the town board.
Oh, that's right, sorry, I knew it wasn't us, but, um, I misspoke, I didn't mean, plan for it. But even so, I just think there are too many variables here, and with variance, if we were to pass it, it runs with the land, and I just, again, don't want to, uh, sign a blank check, just like I said. So, no, I'm not in favor of it.
So, um, I, I guess the way I view it is, it's not really a blank check. I mean, you showed us, uh, the outline of whatever the structure is, uh, gonna be, and the only variance he's, he's looking for are these setbacks, which, uh, we've approved, uh, um, in several other locations, uh, not too far away, including some pretty severe ones with, uh, you know, the last, uh, case. So, I'd have to say that I would support this particular project, the concerns of, uh, the, the other gentleman here, the, particularly the one with his, uh, septic system, uh, that would have to be approved by the, um, town board, that's not really part of our purview, uh, here. But unfortunately, I'm not enough to, uh, uh, swing the, the deal here. So, um, it doesn't look like you're gonna get approval here. So your options are to, uh, table this and come back at another time when you can be a little bit more definitive about the, uh, the building, because I think that'll sway the, uh, the thought here.
Yeah, again, it's, my purchase is contingent on, and, and so in this case, I, I just obviously won't proceed with purchasing the property, which means that probably the, the existing landowner, you know, is, is really the one who's gonna have the circumstances they'll have to deal with, and that nobody else is gonna wanna buy it if they can't build on it, so.
So, do you wanna withdraw the application, table it, or, uh, or we could take a vote and, and it'll get turned down, so it's, uh-
Okay, so explain to me what the difference is. If I withdraw to table it-
If we table it, then, um, you know, you can take a look at your plans, and, you know, propose something, uh, different. If you withdraw, then you have to pay the fees and go through the whole, uh, project again. If we turn it down, then you gotta pay the fees and, you know, go through the whole project again.
I really don't, I don't have a problem with it, just if we knew exactly what that building's gonna be.
And, and I completely understand that, but you understand, as a builder, my, my intent in purchasing it is, is to, um, is to offer it to somebody else to put the house that they want on it. And, and I guess my hope was that by limiting it and saying, okay, we're not gonna go bigger than what we did next door, but if potentially they picked a different style house that was smaller, if they picked a cape as, that had a much smaller footprint, but was taller, I, you know, does that-
So, as long as you don't-
By giving it this way, we give some latitude. If somebody wants to build a little tiny twenty by, or thirty by thirty two-story colonial, we would increase our setbacks. So, so my hope was that by saying, hey, maximum size of this, which would be a big ranch, not, not even a big ranch, a fourteen-hundred square foot ranch, and yet giving myself latitude to do something smaller, if the next customer comes through my door that wants to live in Queensberry and wants to build and doesn't own land, hat wants something smaller or wants a two-story, we would have latitude and not be tied to an approval that said specifically you can only build this house. That, that was the intent and, and the reason that we proposed it the way that we did. Obviously, if somebody wants to put a fifteen-hundred two-story, fifteen-hundred square foot two-story colonial that's twenty-eight by twenty, it actually is just better in that the setbacks are much greater on both sides, so on and forth. So, so my, my intent was just doing the footprint with that, to leave some latitude.
So again, we need some, uh, input from you as to how to proceed.
Well, at this point, you have to, I, I'll have to take the, the vote and get declined because that's the only way that I can get out of the contract.
Okay.
So if it's denied, then I'm out of the contract.
So, at this particular time, let's see, how are we gonna do this? So, uh, Jim, um, why don't you, uh, make a motion here?
Okay. At this point in time, um, having carefully considered the request for this property, it appears that the town board, um, I mean, the- that the town board, I mean, the zoning board of appeals is not amenable to...
Well, so what you should do is make a motion in the affirmative...
Okay.
And then let us deny the motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Area Variance.
So can I just...
44-2020.
So...
44-2020.
I'm just going to interject something, just in case. For a tabling, is that you could potentially table it and come back and get the same result to decline it, but if you came back and you knew a little more information about the project, then you could give them that update?
And I appreciate what you're suggesting. However, just to own a piece of land that I'm tied to only being able to build something and hoping that somebody's going to come through my door and want to build exactly what I'm approved for, it honestly definitely doesn't even make sense to hold it. So I appreciate the offer.
Okay. Because they could always come back for another vari, like that particular purchaser, if something was not, if they didn't meet the approval of the setbacks or something, they would simply come back for that variance.
Correct.
Okay.
But I would own the land and hope and have to go through the process again, and it's not really the intent of purchasing it for us.
Okay.
So you want an approval?
So, yeah, so just make a motion like you're going to approve it.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Area Variance 44-2020 at 175 Sunnyside Road. Having listened to the appeal this evening, the MH Imperial Homes proposes to install a 1,675 square foot home with associated porches. Project work includes installation of a driveway and new septic system and well. The new home is to be located 81 feet from the property line, 76 feet from the rear property line where 100-foot setback is required. Upon review of the request this evening, we find that there will not be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood nor detriment to nearby properties because it's similar in size to other homes that have been created on those other small lots adjacent. As far as feasible alternatives, feasible alternatives were considered. You could build something more compliant, but this is deemed to be the envelope that they wish to build within, and it's not considered to be unreasonable. As far as the request being substantial or unsubstantial, we do not find the request is substantial because almost all those small lots would require some side setback allowances, and because it's the rural residential three-acre zone that trips a lot of, a lot of these requests here, it's remained to this one. As far as an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, we do not note any adverse impacts. It's recognized that smaller modular homes are probably what will be built eventually on this lot, and so we think that this is a good idea. As far as difficulty of being self-created, it's not really self-created because these lots were created prior to the rural residential three-acre zone coming into effect. And as far as the benefits to the applicant from the grantee variance outweighs any resulting detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood, we do not note any detriment to the neighborhood. All those other properties nearby are very close proximity, built similarly. As far as, and the board also finds that the variance request is the minimum necessary for its approval.
So have a motion? I'll second the motion. Call the vote, please.
Mr. Yuriko?
No.
Mr. McDavid?
Yes.
Mr. Kewell?
No.
Mrs. Hayward?
No.
Mr. Henkel?
I'm going to change my vote. I'm going to say yes.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes.
Mr. McCade?
Yes.
So I lost track. What does that...
Oh, it is approved.
It just got approved.
Thank you.
So just a couple notes. Next month or the next meeting is our last meeting of the year.
I'll give you more. Thank you.
So at that particular time, we've got to vote on our secretary and our vice chairman for next year. So think about your choices there. Both Roy and Jim have said that they would like to continue. I have to apply to the town board to continue as the, as the chairman, and I have, I've done that. So Ron, are you going to be here next month?
There's no reason why I wouldn't be here.
Okay.
I'm leaving on the 28th.
Okay, so you will make the meeting. Are we going to have a single meeting or two meetings in December?
We'll have one meeting.
One meeting in December?
Yeah, it will be, right now, it looks very busy, so it'll be very...
It'll be?
Very busy.
Okay. So at this particular time, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Go in favor. All right. Okay. Thank you.